UBSutter.live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. All right. Looking for a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments from the public? Or back to the board? Any comments from the board? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll get through this thing yet. Special Presentations. I guess I get to go first here. Present a certificate of recognition, sorry, Uba County Public Works Department Maintenance Crew. Okay, somebody from Public Works want to come up?
Everybody.
Actually, why don't we just have them all come up?
Yeah, everybody.
You might have a crowd.
Have everybody come up in public.
Yeah, everybody from Public Works come on up.
Yeah, that was quite an event. Wow. Okay, we're gonna read that at the diocese. Okay. Uba County Public Works Maintenance Crew. The Board of Supervisors Certificate of Recognition for the dedication and support to the citizens of Uba County during the 2022 and 2023 storm season, which was quite an event. Thank you very much, and I didn't realize you had this many people out there.
We have more, but thank you very much. Public Works, thank you.
Well. Can you tell us a little bit about that storm? Was it? Anything you've seen before?
Seen it before. Lot of work, but we managed to get thirteen hundred and twelve hours manpower or staff time for those events.
Well.
Over forty.
Thank you all for doing a great job in helping us save a bubble water, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey Craig, maybe while that's going on, do you want to introduce yourself to the other board members and maybe those that are in attendance today, just so that they're aware of who they're recognizing?
I'm Craig Herbert, Construction Manager. We have Jeff Lake, Assistant Superintendent, Steve Cameron, Assistant Superintendent, Clint Gillespie, Superintendent, Byron Sanchez, Nathan Santos, Austin Franks, and Andy Canal. Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate you guys doing that. I had a guy at my door before eight AM knocking about that ditch, and I had a pastor with a bunch of elderly people worried about that pool, so it's really do a picture.
You should be in the picture.
Bad face.
Hard work in Public Works Crew. All right, Received Overview on Caltrans Road Change Program and Upcoming Rural and Tribal Pilot.
Good morning, Supervisors and everyone here. My name is Lauren Prohoda, and I am from the California Department of Transportation, and I'm here this morning just to share some information about an issue that the state has come in down the road towards us, a little information about what the state is doing to try to prepare for that issue, and how you can potentially be involved in our efforts. So I believe I should have a presentation. One moment. All right, so I head up the road charge program, which I'm gonna get into the detail of that in a minute, but as you may be aware, most of our transportation system in the state of California is funded by the state gas tax. That includes state roads, it includes county roads, local roads, transit, and many other things. And we've relied on this for over a hundred years to fund our transportation system, but as we look to the future, it's getting a little bit wobbly, and that kind of plays out in four different ways. One, our vehicles in general are getting more fuel efficient, which is fantastic in so many ways, but that means people are buying less gas, which means they're paying less in gas taxes. In addition, some vehicles, as we know, are not using gas at all at this point in time, and the state has certain policies in place to continue encouragement of a switch to alternative fuel vehicles. Thirdly, inflation is an ongoing thing, and that leads to loss of purchase power. It's not as much of an issue at the state level where when SB one was passed in 2017, the state was indexed to inflation, but the federal level, there's also federal gas tax, that has not been increased since the early nineties. So these three issues are playing out. What we're seeing is a growing inequity, and even fuel tax burden. Those who have older vehicles or larger, less fuel-efficient vehicles are paying more in gas taxes than those who have very fuel-efficient vehicles. So we're seeing this imbalance growing in our tax structure. So what the state has been investigating is a potential replacement mechanism to the gas tax to stabilize our existing funding. Again, the funding we're using right now to maintain our roads and transportation system. And what a road charge is, it's just a per-mile fee, the basic kind of user-based fee, switching from that per-gallon fee to paying via the number of miles you drive. And the state's looking at this again as a potential replacement to the gas tax for stabilizing the existing funding, not necessarily a new tax or new money to be spent, but that funding that we're already using. One per-mile rate for all passenger vehicles so that everyone's paying the same to use the road, again, bringing in some more balance into the tax system where right now, currently, under the gas tax, we're seeing that growing imbalance. And again, really focusing on stabilizing the funding we're using, not necessarily trying to change any behaviors. So I just want to illustrate that last point, just about the growing inequity that we're seeing. So currently under the gas tax, these are just some examples of typical vehicles where you can see for just the typical number of miles that an average California drives in a month, people are paying vastly different amounts. The window here is kind of blocking the last slide, but you can see it's quite this different range in what people are paying. So the potential with moving to gas taxes to really even that out. There we go. Bringing that so that everyone's paying the same to use the road, and you can see that, and that means that some people, costs will come down, some people, costs will go up. So those higher fuel efficiency vehicles, which tend to be owned by, you know, folks on the higher end of the economic spectrum, lower fuel-efficient vehicles will be paying less. And again, research shows that those tend to be people on the lower end of the economic spectrum, and specifically people in rural areas who tend to have larger vehicles just because of the way of life. So. Just want to give a brief overview of how this system might work. What we envision is a state oversight agency that would certify third-party account managers to handle the interactions with taxpayers. The reason for this structure is to, one, keep administrative costs down. A lot of times, the private sector can do things more efficiently than the state. Two, it's really to honor the public's trust more in private entities handling their data than oftentimes the government, so that can be a benefit of the structure. And third, really, to help the system move forward into the future, adapting to technologies as they develop. The private sector can often adapt to changes in technology much faster than the state can. So the account manager could be anything, any business entity that has already established account manager functions. It could be something like usage-based insurance or ride-sharing, perhaps something like Verizon or a utility company, a tolling entity. We were looking for opportunities to pair the collection of road charge with existing businesses and practices to make it super easy for the taxpayer to work with. What the taxpayer experiences is really a range of options of choice in how they can report their mileage to the state. We look at a system that has a range of options because we want to help people balance the trade-offs we all face in society today when thinking about our data between privacy and efficiency. And we believe that the individual taxpayer should be making that choice for themselves, and the government should not be making it for them. So you see here, there's a range of reporting options that have been tested across several state pilots, ranging from very low-tech options to very high-tech options. For example, a low-tech option would be something like having a third-party, just read your odometer, think about something like, similar to a smog check situation, that wouldn't require any technology involved, no tracking, nothing like that. On the other end, many vehicles coming off the line these days have in-vehicle telematics built in. They're reporting all sorts of data just automatically. Some people appreciate the efficiency of that, and so again, they would have that choice to report their miles in that way. So I just want to give you kind of an overview of what's going on nationally regarding this issue, because every state is facing this issue, and then the federal government is as well. So nationally, we already have three states that have active road charge programs, Oregon, Utah, and Virginia. We have a number of states, the ones in green, that have done pilots, and many, many other states that are studying a road use charge as a potential alternative or replacement to the gas tax. In addition, the federal government in the transportation bill that Congress passed last year is also planning a national road charge pilot, which hopefully will start getting up and running this year. So there's just a lot of interest and momentum on this front. And Caltrans, we are still digging into, we've already done two pilots, looking at various aspects of this, and we have another one that's coming shortly here in March. And that's really what I wanted to talk to you about today, and just the opportunity for you guys to be involved. Our next pilot is really focusing on engaging rural and tribal communities, so we can explore the unique issues that the system might have in the day-to-day of those communities. We feel it's really important to bring the voice of rural and tribal drivers to the table as this system is being considered, so we can understand what you love about it, yes, what you hate about it, you know, what's working, what are unique things that we haven't thought about, and really getting your input on how this might work in your day-to-day. So we will be testing in this pilot specifically one of those high-tech reporting options, because we want to explore what kind of benefits this might particularly bring in rural settings. Specifically, you know, if you are someone who has extensive property and you drive a lot on private property, is that a potential tax savings for you? Is it a benefit? It may be, it may not be. We don't necessarily know, that's why we're trying it out. So that's why we're looking to engage as many folks as possible. We are recruiting a bunch of folks from, as I said, rural communities and tribal communities. Participants, we are offering up to $250 each to be part of this pilot. What that entails, that's signing up, you'll get a little plug-in device that you can put into the OBD two port in your car, that's the thing that you plug into when you go to a service station or things like that. Drive around for six months, as usual, look at some simulated invoices, and take a couple of surveys. So that's the link right there where you can go and sign up if interested. And really, again, it's just that opportunity to be involved, try it out for yourself, tell us what you think, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and be involved as the state is crafting this potential policy. So with that, you see my contact information here, but I'd be happy to take any questions, comments, both from the audience and from the board. Thank you.
Any comments, any questions from?
So many. I'll start. One, my question, you kind of hit on it pretty lightly. I spend a good portion of my driving off-road, on the ranch or what have you. So how is that gonna be separated out to not be charged?
Yes.
Yeah, it involves GPS. So we'll be looking at various levels of maps, and so this does involve knowing where your location is. So that's one of those more high-tech options that you can choose. So that's part of the trade-offs. You know, I know there are many people who don't want to engage in location tracking, and again, we'll have that option as well. Again, in this specific pilot, we're testing that more high-tech option, because you need that information to differentiate.
So what about older vehicles? Like I have a sixty-five Jeep. There's no port to plug anything into it.
That, we'd have to find out a different solution. It probably wouldn't work for this pilot specifically, but no overall program, we would explore one of the other reporting options. That's another reason to have that range of options, because we have to deal with a whole range of vehicles from, you know, the classic nineteen sixty-seven Mustang that's never gonna go away, right, to the very advanced.
Tom McQuarrie, did you get that website so you could sign up to have your car tracked?
No. Not yet.
I looked for it, too.
Okay, all right. Seth?
On the surface, it seems less equitable to me. My commute's like two miles. Most of these people are driving like to Sacramento and back, so on that side, it seems a lot less equitable. How many more layers of bureaucracy are we adding to try to run this program?
The goal is none, you know. We're talking a lot with the DMV about being the oversight agency potentially for this system. We're trying to build off existing state processes wherever possible, so we don't have a new agency.
So I guess eliminating the gas tax is off the table?
That is the plan, that this would be a replacement for the gas tax.
Oh, there's still the tax, but it's just a different way you apply it?
It would be a different, yeah, a different mechanism for.
Program, so they will no longer have a gas tax. This program will be.
Right. So we can't call it a tax.
You can call it a tax. It would be a tax. So and ultimately, of course, that discussion has to go through the state legislature. This is a change, potential change in taxes, so all of that would have to be debated.
All right. Well, there's a lot of questions, but I'm better off to pass this off, I think.
Seth, you're on.
So Lauren, I do not want to pummel you. You were just the messenger.
No.
The money from the gas tax, that goes to pay for things like bypasses and third bridges to connect communities. Is that what the money from the gas tax goes for? What does it go for exactly in our area? Because we've been waiting for some things to be funded by the gas tax, and that hasn't happened in fifty years or something. So we're really excited about if the gas tax was collected and spent in our community to help those things. So whose ears should we put a bug in about where the money should be spent? Because we would love some things to be funded by these taxes.
If I could, through the chair, that's not really the purview of this presentation.
Well, in that case, I guess we can talk about that first slide, which I thought was super interesting. So the government required increased gas efficiency, which now is a problem for them. The government subsidized electronic vehicles, electric vehicles, which is now a problem for them. The government has the raising of minimum wage and the stimulus payment, which caused inflation, which is now a problem for them. It's almost as if every time the government acts, there's consequences that create a need for them to act more, and a cascade of avalanche of action by the government. It's super exciting, and so many things they can solve, the utopia that we're heading towards. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. And, you know, governing, as you all know, is complex, and you have to balance many things. So we're trying to be prepared for, you know, the shifting in a lot of the way that our world works. Is that gonna happen overnight? No, but we're trying to plan ahead for the various effects that we do see, regardless of why they exist.
All right, I have a question or two. How many electric cars are registered now in California?
I'd have to look up the numbers specifically, but it's about a million, I think, right now. And to put that in context, we have thirty-four million passenger vehicles registered in California right now.
Now, there was a roundout that happened, that they said, "Don't charge your cars."
True.
Okay. You're not supporting the system that you're trying to put in here. Are road taxes actually used a hundred percent for the roads?
So gas taxes are protected under Article nineteen of the state constitution for transportation purposes. So a good chunk of that is the road, it also includes some transit, things like that, but they have to be established to transportation purposes. And to touch a little bit on your question, you know, there are established formulas set in statute that direct how the money is spent to the state and to the local governments. So that is, you know, directed by the legislature.
How much of our road taxes were used for the train?
None. There are no gas taxes that go to high-speed rail.
All right. Now, the object is to reach a certain percentage of renewable energy is what Governor Newsom's doing. Why doesn't he recognize large hydro or nuclear as renewable energy source?
You know, I really can't speak to that.
I understand. And that, you know, it's just, I appreciate you doing the presentation, but this term equity is used loosely by our government, and the unintended consequences are substantial. So I'll stop my comments there, because she's not there for that. And do you want to open it for public?
No, this is just a special presentation. It's not an action item. But if I could, through the chair, I just want to kind of make sure we're full circle on this. This is really, so the state's recognizing that regardless of who caused it, there is an inequity that's forming because of the gas tax and different fuel efficiencies and vehicles, and frankly, the growing electric vehicle market. So this is the state trying to be proactive and figure out how to equitably distribute the burden of maintaining the road system in California. So I just, this is kind of a pilot program, correct, to try and explore how to redistribute that burden on the traveling public. And instead of paying at the pump, you pay for each mile you've driven.
Yes, exactly.
All right, there's a.
Wouldn't you get a chance, through the chair?
Yes, sir. That's how it's done.
I have a clarification question. Currently, you're calling this a gas tax, right? What's you're collecting?
Yes, currently, we have a gas tax.
Under Article, what'd you say, seventeen or?
Nineteen, the state constitution.
So are you redefining this collection of tax as something different from a gas tax that would get you around complying to Article nineteen?
So my guess is that when the legislature chooses to consider this potential policy, they may, they may not. They would want to consider an amendment to the constitution to make sure that road charges are fully protected under Article nineteen, just as much as the gas taxes.
Okay, but so unless that happens, it's not guaranteed that it's gonna be treated as a gas tax?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any further questions from the board? All right, thank you very much for, it's brave of you.
Hopefully it wasn't too.
You know, it's important to share information. We want to make sure that you guys know what's going on, so that you can be involved and comment as much as you want, and, you know, tell us what you think and the realities of what you deal with. We don't know everything.
All right.
So we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. All right. Item fifty-seven, Receive Health and Human Services Department Quarterly Update. Excuse me, one meeting at a time there. Thank you. Thank you. There is no public comment.
Morning, Chair, Members of the Board. My name is John Corneal. I'm the Assistant Director with the Health and Human Services Department. As I get set up here. That'll work for us, okay. So I'm here to present the quarterly report for the Health and Human Services Department. I've got about thirty-six, thirty-six pages in fifteen minutes, so I'll be moving at a pretty good clip, but if you have any questions, I can try to help with any of those details, or the deputy directors that I'll introduce throughout the report are here as well to help with that. The analysts that put this together, Laura Hamm, she did a fantastic job, I think. I hope you find it as informative and engaging and just plain beautiful to look at, as I do. As a primer for the report, I'll tell you, we broke it into four different sections. We've got a Public Assistance Section, Social Services Section, Public Health Section, and then a general department-wide section that I'll introduce those as we get to them. So moving along here, this is up in the upper left there, Deputy Director Jamie Bartolome oversees Public Assistance. Those are the one hundred and eight employees that work in that area. The first thing that we'd like to highlight is the CalFresh Management Evaluation in Public Assistance. Our partners from the state visit us at different intervals for our different programs and perform audits to make sure that we're administering the programs that they fund us for correctly. This audit specifically was broken into two different areas, Program Access and Case Review. And in the Program Access area, HHS received zero findings, which is a pretty big deal. So there's all of our. Um, so there's all of our staff on the left-hand side there celebrating that. Uh, just for context, the average number of findings in that area was eleven in that same time period. Uh, there were some findings in the case review section. Uh, twelve findings for Yuba HHS. The average for counties uh in the same time period was seventeen. So we performed better in that area as well. And then of those twelve findings, seven of them were related to system automation errors that couldn't really be helped. So that number is actually even lower than it appears on paper. Uh, the next area here is our interactive voice response. We did a reengineering of that, our IVR system. Everybody's encountered an IVR system, if you call it that or not, but when you when you call Comcast or some business in the public sector and you get a phone tree, press one for this, press two for that. We we've had one of those systems in place at HHS for many years. And uh if we implemented it with the best practices that were provided by the vendor at the time. And we have since recently reengineered that phone tree based on new best practices and the idea to get our customers to the information that they need or the person that they need as quick as possible. So now up in this uh little upper box here, you'll see that the entire menu of options is available to you as soon as you select your language. So press one for English, press two for Spanish. As soon as you do that, you've got all the options available to you in that call tree. And then the goals there at the bottom, um shorten the amount of time that our customers are on the phone, engaging in that call tree, simplify the language, reduce the number of prompts, the little button presses that you have to do, and then ultimately promote self-service and get the information to our customers as quick as we can, whether it's through an automated means, if that's what they prefer, or or getting them to uh a worker that can help them with their questions. And then I'll walk through some data that we have here for the uh public assistance area here, a couple of charts. We've got the upper left here. Um, this is the number of programs for the past quarter. So there's your legend down there. The darker teal is the CalWorks program. Then the CalFresh in the light teal, and then the green is Medi-Cal. The yellow line at the top runs on the secondary axis, and that shows you the total number of programs that were managed during each of those months. So um consistently over thirty thousand Medi-Cal programs being managed in HHS. And a total, the the total has climbed each of those months, uh up to fifty seven thousand two hundred and forty-six total programs. Down here. Well, uh, down here, we're looking at our visitors to reception. And this is an unduplicated count of people that actually came to the building in person during each of those months uh on on any given day. So well over two thousand each month, almost three thousand in the month of November. This uh pie chart here is an estimate. Um, I think it's a pretty good estimate. Uh, I can walk you through the methodology if you'd like, but we don't have a clean report that holds all of the individual people that receive a Medi-Cal program. So we weren't able to undo duplicate everybody perfectly, but approximately um forty-one percent of Yuba County residents receiving a um some sort of program administered by the Health and Human Services Department. And the total population based off of the most current numbers from census.gov. So uh now the social services area, there's our Deputy Director Tony Gordon in the upper left there and the fifty-eight employees that work in that area. And want to start with recognizing a couple of different employees that received pretty prestigious awards in that area. Um Chuck Yang and Jean Hobbs. Uh Chuck was awarded a SARB award for the the consistency and amount of work he's done on the School Attendance Review Board. Um, with all things truancy related, all the resources that he's provided, families that he's helped and all the work that he's done in the community in that area. Uh, and that happened at the end of the last calendar year. And then Jean was awarded with two different awards. Um, one of them was the Employee Recognition Award here at Yuba County. May all remember that for workforce excellence. And then she received, she also received the uh Sarah Duncan Award, the first ever from UC Davis, um honoring Northern California child welfare social workers for um for their passion and commitment. So I I for one am um, you know, very feel very fortunate to work with uh people like this that are as committed and professional and competent and passionate about their work that they do every day. So next, uh, a partner or a a project rather uh that the social services area has been working on, the Community Care Expansion Preservation Grant. And what this does is uh it it provides funding for these two different areas, operating subsidy payments and capital projects for licensed residential adult and senior care facilities. And what that helps with is these uh patients that would otherwise be taking up beds in skilled nursing facilities. Well, they can re reside at these now with this funding to help keep these uh help keep these licensed residential facilities open, so they don't have to take up a bed in a skilled nursing facility. And the two areas that the funding provides help in are the operating subsidy payments. You can think of those as um ongoing recurring payment type things. There's a bulleted list of examples there. And capital projects, those are more of the one-time expenses for those facilities. And we have another project here in the social services area, the Access to Technology Grant. Uh, Yuba County was awarded a hundred and forty-seven thousand fifty-one dollars. And that wasn't all awarded to HHS. This is a partnership with the Office of Education and the Yuba County Library. And uh this, what this program is is planning to do is provide digital literacy training for a population of disabled adults and elderly adults. So um, you know, technology is very, can be, I think, very hard to keep up with. Sometimes I feel like I need digital literacy training, you know, when I look at my kids and how they're using their devices and everything. Um, so this plan here, first of all, started with a bunch of outreach tools, surveying the population, trying to get the word out. Then developing the assistance, whether it's through internet subsidies or providing free or reduced price devices. And then we all know you can't just give somebody a device and then wipe your hands. Uh, we're going to provide classes. Those will actually be provided. The instructors will be from the Office of Ed. Classes on how to use the devices, classes on things like internet safety. Um, and then focusing on things that uh that we think will be especially helpful, like utilizing your camera for telehealth or medical visits or connecting with friends and family through various social media outlets and that type of thing. And then uh let's see, moving on to another project. This is sort of, this is a a big project, sort of transformative for HHS. Uh, historically, child welfare visitation services have been provided by the social workers in HHS. Moving to a model now where one of our partners in the community, Youth for Change, will provide these visitation services. And uh the this model actually was going to be helpful in a lot of ways, even though it is a big transformat- transformational change. Um, it's going to allow for more interaction, coaching, more family support. And then a really nice perk will be flexible visitation hours. So we've at HHS consistently had sort of an eight to five uh time period when we're open. Now the hours can be flexible with a partner providing these services for, so that families that work those hours from eight to five can then also engage in visitation. And because this was such a big project, um, everybody had their roles and responsibilities delineated. Uh, from all the way up the top, the Program Manager, Jessica Garcia, with her goals of managing the overall project. The Analyst, Darcy Knox, completing all the administrative paperwork, the RFP, the contract that your board um has already reviewed and approved, all the way down to the supervisors and staff within the division. And then we have some uh some data and metrics from the uh Child and Adult Protective Services Division. Uh, so I'll start in the bottom right. We've got the referrals to adult protective services pretty pretty consistently around fifty, fifty-one, forty-one, fifty-six. Those are referrals, calls from the community to our office about an allegation of uh adult abuse. Up in the upper left now, we have the same thing for children, referrals from the community uh to our office about allegations of abuse or neglect to children. And you'll see the spike in October as compared to November and December, which are roughly around a hundred. Um, in September and October, there's always a spike in these referrals due to the fact that kids are returning to school and teachers are mandated reporters, and our our office receives an influx of those um allegations at that point. So moving on to public health, there's Deputy Director Melissa Shaw in the upper left and forty-eight employees that work in that area. And the first project uh we want to highlight here is the Lindhurst Wellness Center, which the ribbon cutting was in January of twenty twenty-three, now named the Blazer Support Center. And um it has been wildly popular and we think successful. I know that uh Melissa can provide a lot of success stories, just in the very short time period it's been open now. But um students are able to either self-refer or families can be referred and then work with social workers or therapists. Um, we partnered with uh Peach and the Office of Ed for this project. Um, and there there've already been a few instances of students self-referring and being able to take a short timeout from from school, from class and regulate and return to class. Where in the past, without this um, without the center being available, it would have been a a day-long suspension and they would have would have missed school for the the rest of the day. Uh, so then let's talk about the inmate STD testing project in public health here. Uh, I'm going to go through some data for that on both of these pages. And the charts are the same, just for different diseases. The way these work here are, so we'll look at we'll look at syphilis here. Um, on the left-hand side here, we've got the percentage of in of incoming inmates that agreed to test or whichever the for the respective disease listed here um in the thirty-day period. We actually go back to September on this chart, not just October. So five percent agreed to test in September, one percent agreed to test in October, nineteen percent in November, and nine percent in December for syphilis. Now, of those that tested, you've got the respective percentage that tested positive. And of those that tested positive, you've got the percentage that went on to successfully receive treatment. So we think this is a pretty big deal in public health. Um, these are diseases that may have otherwise gone undetected and may have otherwise gone undertreated or un- untreated, rather, and may have otherwise been further spread throughout the community. So um a a very successful project, we think, for the Communicable Disease Program. And now uh department-wide updates, there is uh me, John Cornel, up in the upper left and the forty-nine employees that work uh on things department-wide in the Administration and Finance Division. And the first thing we'd like to highlight is the um temperature-controlled food service vehicle that we partnered with the Salvation Army to uh to procure. And this is a going to be a real big boon to our disaster service efforts, our care and shelter efforts in the event of an evacuation. Um, we're able to partner with the Salvation Army, like I said, and have them provide, prepare the food, then come to the disaster evacuation area, provide that food. And uh it's something that they are very good at and that they do routinely and not a duty that uh we have to jump into without much um much practice or uh or skill in doing, quite frankly. Uh, another disaster preparedness project is our contracts that we developed with Sycamore Ranch and Ponderosa Park. And so due to the geographic makeup of our county, we have a lot of residents that live in the foothills. And again, the geographic makeup, many of our disasters now are wildfires. So a lot of residents evacuate and they evacuate with a travel trailer or an RV. Uh, when they evacuate now, if they have their own travel trailer or RV, we can send them over to one of these two locations. And they and and we can pay for them to uh to stay at that location for the duration of the disaster and the evacuation event. Uh, it's kind of a double whammy win for us in um care and shelter during a an evacuation because we it, first of all, it's it's very easy for us. They can go right over to one of these locations. Second of all, it provides better service to the the customers that we're we're providing service to. Um, they're able to evacuate with the place that they're already familiar with. And um, you know, there there are personal items around. They don't have to stay in some strange hotel room or go to a uh uh shelter. Um, so it's uh, we we think it's really a better level of service that we're providing. This is the uh Pink October donation that we do annually at Health and Human Services. And we uh it's it's a big event at our department and we raise a bunch of money. There's uh the most uh recent amount of money that's been raised, uh almost ten thousand dollars. In fact, uh, we've got the history of the di- different amounts that have been raised. All the money goes to Give It These Caring for Women Foundation. If you total up all of these pink bubbles here, all these different donation amounts, it's over fifty-five thousand dollars that the employees from Health and Human Services have donated back to the community. Uh, then we've got uh several different projects here that we've uh partnered with different agencies throughout the community and helped do outreach. Uh, the Safe Routes to School Program, there we are partnering with Civic Thread, uh helping get kids to school safely and helping promote HHS activities in tandem with that demographic overlap. Also, the uh Internet for All Now, the Affordable Connectivity Program. Uh, I believe we uh raffled off a Chromebook for that to help get the word out. We've got the um OES Emergency Preparedness Fair, the first ever on the Valley floor. There's us with uh OES sharing uh what we do regards to care and shelter during the uh during a disaster or evacuation event. Uh, successful connections with probation, helping get uh all of the attendees of this um connected with the resources that HHS provides. And there's uh, we've done a lot of events with the library. There's just one of them right there, um sharing some HHS information during the uh trick-or-treat event out at the library. And many, many car seat presentations throughout the year, uh helping residents learn how to correctly install car seats. Car seats are great, but they need to be installed correctly for uh the safety of the children in them. And the Great American Smokeout, uh helping to spread the word about uh the the dangers of tobacco and helping to uh mitigate tobacco use as much as possible. And there's the uh Marysville Christmas Parade. This one was intended to be uh this float was intended to be used in the Olivehurst Christmas Parade as well, but that was canceled this year. We've got the Nightmare Before Christmas theme, um some of our staff working on it there. Um, I don't know if any of you got to see it, the Zero Dog was pretty cool on like a uh on a fishing pole, so it looked like he was kind of floating around like a ghost. Um, and that that one happened in the rain too, even though, but it didn't get canceled, so. Uh, and then uh lots of social media campaigns from our communication and engagement team. Uh, we know that now in the modern world that we live in, it isn't just going out physically and talking to people that that is considered outreach and spreads awareness about what you do. There's lots of stuff online that can be done, so we uh we spend a good deal of focus on that. And finally, here, we've got uh a contract management software that we stood up uh very recently. We're still in the support period, working through that, but in our department, this has been a big win to automate a lot of things that were otherwise done manually before, manually sending out emails and um reminders and trying to manage all of the many, many contracts we have without any system to help with that. So um we're still ironing out some of the wrinkles here, but we have uh gone live with this, and that was uh that was a big deal for us as well. So I think we made it. That is the end of the report. And I would invite uh any questions that you have, and if I can't help with those, my um fellow deputy directors are here to help.
Yeah, quite an army back there for you on support.
Through the chair?
Go there.
Couple of questions. Did I see a sign that said that you'll give them ten dollars for a pack of cigarettes?
I believe so, yes. That was part of the Great American.
Is that a partially used pack of cigarettes?
I'm not, I I can get you detailed.
I'm just curious, because that's a really, that's like a gun buy. I'm just curious, cause that's a really, that's like a gun buyback program where I get to print it and then sell it to the government. If these cigarettes are getting ten dollars a pack, I'm curious. Uh, the other program I was curious about uh was your child abuse. Um, so I've had a presentation from Youth for Change before. It seemed like it was very voluntary, the way they described it in the way that they dealt with families. I assume that there are some families that do not uh comply with the voluntary uh to the degree that they need to. At that point, does it then get promoted to the regular social service worker to deal with in the more traditional way, or how does that transition work?
Good evening, uh Board, I'm Tony Gordon, or good afternoon, morning. I'm Tony Gordon, the Deputy Director for Uba County uh Child Welfare Services. So I think you're thinking of two programs. One is called the Voluntary Program is, that's a home visiting program. So those are those referrals that come into our agency. We, the, the team gets together, they evaluate it, and it's something that doesn't quite lead to the level of a actual CPS investigation. So they have a home visiting program where they do Youth for Change. Now that vendor is the same vendor that was awarded the um RFP when they put in their request for proposal. So those visits will be taken at, at our office. Those are court-ordered visits, and so that's a little bit different. So they still don't have to participate if they don't want to in those court-ordered visitation services. That's their choice as a parent. But uh those are documented and then that's reported back to the court. I don't know if that answers that.
That, that does. I guess my question is, so if they don't comply or if there's something that's extenuating circumstance, what is the next step after that?
Well, it's, when anytime you have those circumstances and you have to go through the court process, so their, the recommendation could be not to reunify the family. It could be to terminate parental rights, and so there's a process to that. So we have to provide those. Uh, objective view to the courts to say, here's where families were participating in other services such as substance abuse treatment. We offered these, all these services for them to come in and have that reunification program.
I understand. So I guess maybe I was thinking of something slightly differently. So in this scenario I'm envisioning, it probably wouldn't then be Youth for Change at all that's involved. In the original complaint or referral from the uh teachers in October and September, and so they've not already been in the system. The first contact from the government to the family about an issue then would not be Youth for Change.
Uh, it's a partnership. So we do get a referral and then um if we do get that referral again and it doesn't rise to the level where CPS would do an actual investigation. We partner with Youth for Change, they do a home visit with them.
So CPS still is doing investigations?
Yes, in-house doing some.
That was my question. Okay, great, thank you. And then the third question I had is probably more Dr. Lou or Sheriff Anderson. I was curious, um, you guys have great treatment rates on the STDs uh inside the jail. That's fantastic. The percentage of people who are getting tested was relatively low, as is the percentage of people who um have something with them. I was curious, is it felt that there is a large number of people who by choosing not to be tested, there is still uh a lot of infection uh happening? Or no, the people who are sick are the ones that are choosing to be tested and we're really fixing the issue? Cause there's, there's statistics and that doesn't always reflect.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't begin to speculate on that, Dr. Lou.
Um, yeah, we've been struggling with the lower number of opting in for the test. Some of it is because uh inmates feel that we are gonna use the uh test samples for other types of tests. So we've had to reassure them repeatedly that we are not allowed to test for any additional test besides the stated tests for syphilis, chlamydia, and gonorrhea. Um, syphilis testing is actually a blood test. We have heard from Wellpath or jail medical providers that some inmates uh don't like to get their blood taken. Um, so they've declined that. In terms of the percentage of test positivity. Uh, for STD, we're guessing it's around ten percent of the total jail population. So yes, we have a lot of room for improvement. And every month we meet together with the jail commander, Captain Garza, in Wellpath to kind of do quality improvement as to how we can engage the inmates. We actually just instituted a social worker and a nurse to talk to the inmates and hopefully through that building of trust. We will see the rise in inmates opting in for STD testing.
To, to the chair, can I add one more thing on to my presentation? Please, thank you. Um, I neglected to mention, I didn't follow my paper notes here closely enough, but um. In the public assistance area, there's uh one, I guess, two other things I wanted to mention. The um. There were some things, we, we know the public health emergency. Uh, a lot of things changed around policies, a lot of things were um suspended. Two of the ones that I wanted to mention in the uh CalFresh program, um, a lot of people call that food stamps. There was a, an emergency allotment that was automatically provided to uh, to recipients of the CalFresh program. Uh, at, a, a minimum of ninety-five dollars, I think on average it was above a hundred and forty dollars per case, uh extra CalFresh that was provided. And in Medi-Cal, there's, there's a thing called a redetermination where at different intervals. Uh, at least yearly, generally, uh you have to provide more documentation and kind of re-verify your eligibility for the program. That was suspended. So as a public health emergency unwinds and comes to an end. This uh CalFresh emergency allotment, this additional CalFresh that people were receiving is gonna come to an end. And then the redeterminations for Medi-Cal are going to begin again. Which means that some people will probably be discontinued for not providing the administrative paperwork that's necessary. Um, or having, you know, different amounts of income or, or not being eligible to the program anymore. Um, and for CalFresh, that money is no longer gonna be spent in the community because people won't be receiving it. So I just wanted to uh make sure I included that as well.
Right. Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Okay. Another question. I'm sorry. On the Medi-Cal program, just so I understand the process, um, there's people who don't. Do their paperwork ahead of time. Something happens, they go to the emergency room, they have an issue, they get a retroactive, they can do the Medi-Cal, is that right?
Uh, retroactive Medi-Cal does exist, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. It's a well-put-together presentation.
Thank you.
Wow. That was very interesting. Uh, public communication. I'll let you go ahead and read that.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes. And each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to comment, please use the raise hand function or star nine if participating on a phone. Please note, the board action cannot be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we have one request to speak card and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. All right, Tom, you're on.
Well, sorry.
Okay. I was under the impression that both the public and the board would be able to ask questions for the presentation.
That was merely a presentation, that's.
Yeah, well, you guys got to ask questions, I thought equity. Okay. Anyway, my name's Tom Quarter and uh good morning, gentlemen, and um. I would uh like to address you concerning and uh resurrecting the uh last time I spoke here about the Brown Act. And I, I'm here to encourage you folks uh to revisit your decision. Or predecessor's decision to restrict the public from utilizing the nice TVs. That the uh presidents of this county uh have purchased and are still using. Um, as you may know, the last time I was here, I was denied the use so that I could present pictures to enhance. And more um concisely educate the public as to the problem with the drainage in Olivehurst. Uh, this is a powerful tool and presently the uh decision of the board are keeps it out of the public hands. And uh since it's our money, I would really like to encourage you guys to revisit the Brown Act because as I was advised by the clerk. I went to county council and county council, not this gentleman, but the other gentleman who works in there. And he stated that the Brown Act clearly places that decision to allow or not allow. In the supervisor's laps. And your predecessors apparently had the time and had this um decision come up before. And maybe I'm the tip of the spear, okay, but guess what, I'm here. And I'd like to present some pictures up here and right now the policy is, I am told, that no, I cannot put my pictures up here. To educate the public on the problem that's existed for sixty-seven years. A problem which is something that the county accepted when they approved the suburb and the plans for Olivehurst. This land, the, the drainage is on public property. It is a county uh item to maintain, which has not been maintained, and we all understand, okay? Finances have been laid out there. Oh, we don't have money. Okay, fine. Um, what else are we gonna say? We don't have the money for. A lot of stuff has. Sixty-seven years later. I would like to ask you folks to reconsider your decision on the Brown Act. I can put pictures up here and the audience can then therefore see what we're talking about. My neighbors don't like waking up with two inches of water in their uh garage and everything having to be stacked up on pallets. To keep it from being destroyed by rainstorms we just had. So in conclusion, please revisit your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Any further public comment? All right, we'll move to county departments. Item nineteen, Community Development Services, adopt a resolution authorizing Community Development Service Director or designate to apply. To the California Department of Housing and Community Development. For the Pro-Housing Designation Program. Interesting that word, pro-housing.
Through the chair, I'm Kevin Perkins, County Community Development. I'm both excited and proud to, to bring this item before your board. I'll, I'll talk about both of those, excitement and, and pride here, here later, but first of all, what is pro-housing? So as you guys know, the state's really been pushing housing production uh the last probably five, six years. And they've come up with a, a designation pro-housing, which incentivizes jurisdictions to um. Make housing a priority and, and make their rules and their development codes and zoning ordinances more friendly, so it's easier for housing to be, be constructed. And so that's, that's a little bit of what that is, but how, how the, the two ways, the primary ways that the state is trying to. Incentivize being pro-housing is one through um adding through grant applications um extra scoring points. So for example, um, public work supplies for a lot of grants and, and typically on the grant application, there's a question that says, uh, are you pro-housing? If you have a pro-housing designation, you can get anywhere from two to five additional points through that grant application. If you have that designation, you know, the significance of it or anecdote, anecdotally. Um, you know, and I spoke with Dan Peterson, the Public Works Director today. On one of our most recent grant applications, the Active Transportation Program.
Hey, so move.
Dan, I'll, I'll make, I'll make it quick. Uh, Dan, Dan applied for a grant and lost out on getting um drainage. And you know, complete street project in Olivehurst by one point, and if we had this pro-housing designation, it would have given him anywhere from two to five points. So in addition to grant applications, which will make it easier, um, there's also a pilot program, and so I'll, I'll deal with nineteen and twenty. This is item nineteen, but item twenty is, is related. So I'm gonna do a presentation for both of them at once, but item twenty. It gives us the opportunity to do a pilot program where the state will give us, if we have a pro-h- housing designation, anywhere from four hundred. To a million dollars that will allow us to um purchase properties for affordable housing. So we can partner with our affordable housing community, Habitat, Regional Housing, and other developers to um. Buy some properties in, in development. So that's a little bit about um the, the, the program. One thing I do want to note is out of, you know, the four, over five hundred cities and counties in the state, right now, there's only ten um jurisdictions that have this designation. And you know, by far, we're the smallest and the, the most rural that would be applying for it. You know, we're the, the jurisdictions that have it so far. Are the City of Oakland, the City of San Diego, City of Sacramento, Roseville. And the, the counties, there's only two counties that have it, the County of Sacramento and the County of, of Placer County. So that's, that's where a little bit of the pride comes in, that I'm, I'm excited that the state is recognizing something that, that your board has been as long as I've been here, which is pro-housing. They've just, you know, have a new in-vogue term called pro-housing designation. So the, the first item is, you know, authorizing. The Community Development Director to apply for this designation. So that's.
Through the chair, that was a no any type of sport. That was my level of excitement. At the idea of getting those extra points to get that grant.
No, I, I, I'm excited, I'm excited, I'm excited too. I'm excited about this program, so.
Any further questions? I have a question. Uh, the term affordable housing. Why does the, why does the state keep piling on different additions to housing to make them not affordable? Such as solar, such as fire suppression systems. Those two items alone have, have priced a lot of people out of the market. And uh, I, I just, you know, affordable housing is. Different uh terminology in the state versus what we think is, but that's just one man's opinion here. So any further questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Okay, we have a motion. Need a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Res.
Yeah, so, so twenty, um, again, twenty, um, right now, be, before we, we get to twenty-one, thing I do want to, um, I want to introduce Amanda. Amanda is. Amanda is a new project manager that we have in Community Development and her role is to do everything housing-related with us. And in addition to just working in Community Development, one of the benefits that we have is she's working with our affordable housing partners. And the, the part that I'm excited about is she's, she's working with our Health and Human Services Department too. She's really bridging the gap between um Community Development. And Health and Human Services to make sure that, that we're communicating and speaking the same language on, on all things housing. So, you know, I do want to, to give Amanda, one, the introduction and two, kudos. She was the one who went through all of the, the scoring on, on the uh. On these programs and, and is going to be submitting the grant application. So. So on the second one is just, you know, allowing us the opportunity to apply for the pilot program that um. Amanda has hit a threshold where we believe we're gonna be able to apply for a million dollars and receive a million dollars through this pilot program. If we don't um get all the points that we think we're, we're supposed to get, well, the consolation is getting four hundred thousand, so.
All right. Any question?
I actually came here from the city and county of San Francisco. Yes, so I, I'm new to the county and.
This was a little change of pace.
Yes, yes, it is. I love it.
I wish the uh EDC would uh advertise in Sacramento and say affordable housing thirty-four miles north, west, northeast. Um, all right, we, we, you ready for a motion on?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the public before we get that far? All right, we have a motion. Need a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That was a quick presentation on twenty. All right, item eleven, twenty twenty-three, Human Resources, Approve Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding with Management Supervisory Association. Wow, you guys have a.
If, if I could through the chair, i- if, if we could also call sixty-seven, because they're, they're, they're paired together.
Sixty-seven. All right, so we'll, we'll include sixty-seven with eleven, so.
Okay, good morning. Uh, Jill Abel with the Human Resources Department. And uh this morning I'm asking for your approval on an amendment to uh the, the contract with the Management Supervisory Association. And the Deputy Sheriff's Association, um, related to a couple of, uh, an issue of what we call Resident Hill, uh Deputy or Resident Hill Sergeant Program. So during our recent contract negotiations, uh we realized that we needed to make some adjustments to this language. Um, however, we needed to work with CalPERS on adjusting that language because um there are a couple of, of important components to the Resident Hill program. Um, the first is that it's an assignment that the sheriff um makes to, you know, an individual is assigned to that area and. Um, the sheriff, if he wants to come up as well, can talk about this, but my understanding is that this is a very um. It's important that this assignment be a long-term assignment, that there are relationships built in the community. That there's an understanding of the different routes and the different um challenges of the community. So um someone is assigned to this on, on a fairly long-term basis. And then in addition to that, there are some situations when a person, a deputy or a sergeant may also live in that. may also live in that area, in the, in the hill beat itself. So there's also a possibility that someone may not live in the hill beat. So you could be assigned there and you could live in Marysville, or you could be assigned there and you could live in that location. So what this language does is it does not change the dollar amount that someone would get if they live there and are assigned there. What it does is it says you can get one dollar amount if you're a deputy, two hundred and fifty dollars a month if you're assigned there. And if you also live there, you'll get two hundred and fifty dollars a month in addition, but that will not be perceible or pensionable income to you. The same with the sergeant. If you're assigned there, you would get three hundred dollars a month for the assignment itself. If you also live there, you would get an additional three hundred dollars and that would be not pensionable. So the dollar amounts are the same. Essentially, you could get up to five hundred or six hundred a month as they have been before, but it's, it's separated into a perceible and non-perceible dollar amount. Are there any questions about, about that?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Bring it back to the board for item eleven. Okay, did I get a motion here?
I, i- if I could through the chairs, so we'll need to have separate motions. So one for the MSA contract and then a separate one for the DSA contract.
I understand they're separate. Okay, this is for item eleven. All right, we have a motion. Need a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes.
Thank you.
All right, and do you need to explain sixty-seven?
Sure.
I guess, yeah.
That would be great. So item sixty-seven being brought to your board today is a request to make a slight amendment to the Deputy Sheriff's Association contract. So what happened is after the contract was approved, we were approached by the Deputy Sheriff's Association that it was their intent that some corporals in the jail also receive a one-time lump sum payment. However, it was not specifically proposed in that manner, so it was kind of an oversight. They came to us and asked, could we please include them? Because it was their intent to include them, even if it wasn't done in writing. And so the CIO and I met with the Deputy Sheriff's Association and we were asking your board to approve the amendment to the contract for these four employees that were inadvertently left out of the proposal.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Bring it back to the board for a motion.
So moved.
All right, need a second? Done? All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That measure passes now. All right, now to item thirty-five. Jill.
Good morning again, Jill Abel with the Human Resources Department. And I am presenting this item also on behalf of the County Administrator's Office. We've worked together on this project. So this morning I'm asking your board to approve a countywide telework policy and guide. This was established, you know, during the pandemic. We, we worked off of an emergency telework policy. A lot of our employees had to be sent home, obviously. And we were able to, to serve the public remotely in many circumstances. But now with the, the pandemic and the emergency ending, we believe that there are still, still several situations where some departments may have the ability to use part-time telework. A team of managers and county council worked with, with Kevin and I to develop this policy and the guide. We got input from department heads, we got input from labor, and the CEO has approved, approved this policy in its current form that's being presented to you. So I can tell you from a recruitment and retention standpoint, employees are looking for flexibility. We hear it all the time. We hear it when people are considering whether to apply for a job and when people are leaving our organization. And even telework being offered one day per week or flexible work schedules can drastically change an applicant pool, especially for certain types of positions. Now, we recognize our number one priority is public service. And there are a lot of county departments that are not going to be able to offer telework because they have either face-to-face service, in-person service, or the work just isn't conducive to telework. But there are some departments that will have the ability to weigh out those recruitment and retention needs and the needs to serve the public and determine if there are certain positions in their department that could telework on a part-time basis. Maybe it's one day a week. Maybe it's just on an as-needed basis when someone's doing a special project. And maybe it's some other form of telework. But each department would need to use this policy and guide and then present a plan to the County Administrator's Office with how they would choose to do that. And that would need to be, they would need to address all the issues, right? Like information security issues, employee-related issues like does the employee have sufficient internet access to, to telework on a part-time basis? So again, this is not a full-time telework policy. This is not anything that's being required of departments. It's simply an option that a department could use going forward to present to the County Administrator for some positions in their department or, or potentially all, if, if they could qualify that, to do so on a part-term voluntary basis. And we have also gotten feedback from different departments on what they would like to, to see to make telework more successful. We're working on putting together training for teams, offering that to employees. And managers also some in-person and on-demand training related to how to manage remote employees, how to make sure productivity needs are being met. And I think within your packet, you, you probably have the policy. And I believe one of the forms was included, but there's also an employee agreement. That agreement would, would, the employee would then request to telework. For example, if they said, I'd like to telework every week on Thursday, they would, then the department would assess, are they meeting the performance requirements to telework? Is their work conducive to that? And then they would go through an entire like IT-related and safety checklist to make sure that they actually meet the criteria. And so I think it's very well put together. We've met a lot of the requirements and needs, and I am happy to answer questions from the board.
Any questions from the board?
Jill, I've got a quick question.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Pay, does it affect their pay one way or the other? And the other question would be equipment. Do we make an allowance for home equipment?
And this policy is, is voluntary, so it does not affect their pay. They won't receive any stipend for teleworking. Their home internet will not be paid for. None of the equipment at home, none of their electricity. It's voluntary, so if they want to do it, they can. But the county is not going to give them additional money to do it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further questions from the board?
Let's make a comment. That's all right. So I have a good friend, actually Vice Commander of the Aero Squadron, that's a Caltrans engineer. When Caltrans did that, they became more productive working from home.
There's an exception to everything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, any questions from the public? All right, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes.
Thank you.
All right. Item thirty-one, County Administrator. Approve five settlement and release agreements with developers due reimbursements from levy impact fees.
Good morning, Chair, Board Supervisor, excuse me, Sean Powers, Assistant County Administrator. Actually have the pleasure of presenting this item today. This is the culmination of a little bit of a year's work between us and our support for Three Rivers. Your board may recall back in twenty twenty, we had the Plumas Lake Workout Agreement where we had three objectives that we wanted to achieve. Reduce impact fees to spur development, reduce the tax burden for those that have been paying it. And then also, we still have this advanced funding credit that was due to five different developers that had funded above and beyond their obligations for Three Rivers impact fees back between oh-three and oh-eight. So those fees weren't due until the levies were completed and certified. That happened late in the middle of last year. So here we are looking at trying to figure out a way to pay these back with the levy impact fees that come in. So we're kind of opposed with about two options with this two-point-seven million obligation. We could look at the burden of the WLF A levy bonds or the, the larger finance that we did to complete that work and also a combination of this advanced funding credit fee owed. We'd have to do an analysis and provide kind of a proportionate share to these developers back, which frankly, if we had done that analysis, it wouldn't be a very exciting payback and we'd basically be barely keeping up with interest. So we came up with a proposal to have the Water Agency provide us some assurance for the debt service for the last three payments, which allowed us to build a little bit of a nest egg with the impact fees that totaled about one-point-four million we have in the bank right now. And then we said, if we could propose a settlement to the owners of the, this debt with these five developers at a certain level, that would definitely get their attention. Borrow a little bit from our friends at the Water Agency to provide some extra assurance to maybe see if we could settle this out in a more efficient manner. So with a combination of one-point-four million that we have currently funds on hand and a potential five-hundred-thousand-dollar borrowing from the Water Agency, we can take this two-point-nine million-dollar debt, approach the developers with a seventy cents-on-the-dollar settlement agreement, which then also gives us a refinancing opportunity from about five-point-six percent interest that's owed to those developers down to about two percent. So an overall reduction of the debt owed and then also a refinance at a lower percentage with the debt owed. So this all occurred late last year and we have tentative agreements with all of the owners of those debts. It's already gone to your Trulia Board on the seventh for a tentative approval as well. So that is before your board today to approve those agreements with those five developers. It was a heavy lift to get to this and I definitely wanted to thank the Trulia Consultants, Seth Wazell, Mark Northcross with the Water Agency, and also County Council that helped us draft an agreement that could get to the settlement and get a full and final release from this with all the developers. And we'd also like to thank the developers who considered and received and approved these settlement offers as well. This is a definite long-term improvement in efficiency in our management of our levy bond obligation with the impact fees. So without open up any questions.
So that freed up approximately, what, two thousand lots to build? Did it make, make sense? Did it?
I, i- if I could through the chair, it doesn't have a direct correlation to lots, but what it does is it gets back to that workout plan from twenty twenty where we're trying to meet those three objectives and this is the third.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll let that lie.
Supervisor, I think it did, it reduces that burden for future development with the level of the impact fees required to continue building. Obviously, we want as much development to still occur so we can handle our obligations.
All right. Any questions from the board? Any questions from public? All right, we'll bring this back to the board for a motion. Okay, motion, second.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, and then we have item thirty-two, I think is the same.
I, I just keep this one short. You approved the agreements. Now I need to go to the Water Agency and actually borrow the money to make it happen. So shorten speed on this one.
All right. Any questions from boards? Any questions from the public? Bring it back to the board for motions.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Shaw. All right. Let's see, ordinances and public hearings, I think, next.
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Okay. Item forty, Community Development Services ordinance. Full public hearing, waiving and adopt ordinance.
Through the chair, Kevin Perkins, CDSA. I'll, I'll make my spiel quick, quick on this. I know Supervisor Messick hasn't heard this yet, but before you is our annual development code or zoning ordinance updates. The, the history behind this was in two thousand and fifteen when your board updated the, or adopted our development code. The last time it was, our development code was overhauled was nineteen eighty-three and it was completely not really useful. And so your board in adopting the development code asked staff to come back and do annual updates to make sure the development code was more of a living document and that it was updated and in current and not some dinosaur of a, a document that, you know, didn't really do much for, for the county. And so since that two thousand and fifteen adoption, CDSA has been doing annual updates to our development code, which is why I'm in front of you today. This year, we, we did something a little bit different. We held a workshop with our planning commission and spent, you know, a good two hours talking, you know, in detail what the changes were, what the planning commission wanted to see. And after that workshop, we brought the, the changes the planning commission requested back to the planning commission in November. The unanimous, unanimously voted to recommend the changes to your board. So, you know, in the sake of time, I, I'm just going to go over like the highlighted areas that I think that you guys might want to hear. I'll go through them kind of quickly. If there's anything you guys want me to go into more detail, I'll do so after my presentation. So the first one is temporary arborists inclusion. So right now, there's a lot of arborists that are doing work in our foothill region, cleaning up post-fire recovery activities and also making sure that the, our foothill region is more fire resistant. One of the problems these arborist companies are finding are there's not a place to put them, house their equipment, their, their trucks, et cetera, et cetera. So we wanted to create a, a, the ability for these, these companies to be able to house their, their equipment for a temporary amount of time. So we're going to add the ability for arborists to be able to utilize our temporary use permit. The temporary use permit process allows neighbors to, you know, gives them notification. They can comment on the, the, the process. And if they don't have an issue, then we can administratively approve them. So that's one of the first changes we're doing. The second one is in our Valley Growth Boundary Agriculture or livestock, excuse me, livestock is limited to parcels over one acre in size. But one of the things we didn't have is clear definitions of where those livestock could be located. And so, you know, we, we've run into some issues where people had with properties over one acres in size had pigs, goats, cows, et cetera, in their front yard. And we figured it wasn't really appropriate to have that type of livestock in the front yard. So we, we made language or added language to, to ensure that the livestock's in the backyard, unless it's more of a ranch home where the house is in the front and they have horses or something like that in the front. So there's, we, we are wanting to make sure that we accommodate what people want on their properties, but not also make it where it's, you know, not, not nice for, for the neighbors. Also, we want to clarify something in our special events ordinance. Right now, in our special events ordinances in the foothill area, you have to have an ambulance as part of your special event. The problem that applicants have been having is by county, ambulance won't provide them an ambulance because of ambulance shortages, et cetera, et cetera. So we wanted to remove that requirement because it's not happening anyway and, and we don't want to burden someone with a requirement that they can't actually do. The next one is development impact fees for our mobile home parks. Currently, mobile home parks are allowed by zoning right in our high-density residential zoning district. One thing that I don't know if your board is aware of, but the county doesn't regulate mobile home parks, the construction of mobile home parks or any of the building permits associated with the mobile home parks, those all go through housing and community development through the state. And so what we want to do is make sure it's clear in our development code that those mobile home parks are still subject to development impact fees. So if someone wanted to develop a five-hundred-unit mobile home park, the impacts to the community are still going to get paid. Whereas right now, it, it, it's not necessarily clear and we'd have to go through a, a process with HCD to, to make sure that that was clear. So that's, that's, yes.
New mobile home parks, I thought.
No, there hasn't, there haven't been any new mobile home parks. But this is something that we, we saw in our code that was, was an error that, that we wanted to make sure that anyone who wanted to development, to develop a mobile home park, it was clear upfront in our development code that they were going to be subject to development impact fees the same way that apartment complex or a residential subdivision would.
So it's in case the state changes its position?
Well, it's, it's just, it's, it's more of a putting it in our ordinance so that it's clear to any developer that they would be subject to development impact fees, even though the, the state is their approval body in the high-density residential zone. So that's, so that's just, you know, wanting to make sure that we have clarity and that no one tries to do something and then gets upset that they weren't told ahead of time. Next, right now with conditional use permits. If someone were to get a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission or a development review committee, they get two years to make that, whatever they got approved, happen. Right now, we only allow a ninety-day extension if they need extra time. And we want to propose adding from ninety days to a year, giving them more time to develop their project if, if needed. Next are a couple of state laws that we're, we're wanting to make sure we're consistent with. There was a state law that passed that requires small, that allows small and large daycares to be permitted in residential districts by right. And so we're updating our development code to reflect the state. Large daycares to be permitted in residential districts by right. And so we're updating our development code to reflect the state law. And secondly, there was a state law SB nine that passed. That allows duplexes by right in single family residential zones. And so we added that into development code to make sure we're consistent with state law. We we did some clarification in our development code to make it more user friendly. There was a term. Z for zoning clearance that was really confusing people that the Z really meant that you got to do it with the issuance of your building permit. And so we wanted to to remove that that confusing part and just take away the Z and make it. A P, which means principally permitted, which is effectively the same thing, but it really confused our 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 customers. So we want to make sure we're a little bit more user friendly on that. Something that our planning commission was really excited about, and this is only for production builders. That we're requesting that moving forward for production builders, that when they build fences, that they use steel posts instead of wood posts. A lot of times, you know, as you guys can see it during any windstorm, you know, the wood posts in the ground end up rotting and after a. A rain and a storm, people's fences fall down. So. There's a pretty nominal cost between wood posts and steel posts at this point in time. So we are putting a requirement in. That for production builders only, not not mom and pop. So if someone wants to rebuild their fence or do something. That's not associated with a production builder, they're not subject to this. It's just our our new homes. And last two items are, one, we want to remove construction and material yards from allowed use in our commercial, general commercial zone. This is, this is kind of getting back to our Linnhurst Avenue corridor, which we're trying to upgrade, you know, Costco's building permit was issued last week and. And we have a lot of momentum going on and we don't want that commercial corridor to be. Set up with large vehicles, parking and and not really conducive with what we want as, you know, a robust, exciting new. Commercial corridor. So we want to remove that, the ability for people to have a construction and material yard in our in our commercial districts. We find that more. Consistent with our industrial district, which should happen, you know, possibly around the airport and in areas like that. And lastly, in our foothill region, we have an outdoor sports and recreation definition. And this only applies to equestrian and rodeos. And, you know, we recognize there's a lot of people that want to do. Outdoor recre- recreation that's not equestrian and rodeo based. And so we want to expand that to a lot of people if they want to do. You know, paintball or or something of that nature that they can do it through a conditional use permit process. In addition to the zone changes I I just spoke about, we do, we are recommending that your board. Make four changes zones total for for properties. One is. A property on Ardmore Avenue that went through a lot line adjustment and we want to make sure the zoning. They changed their boundaries and so they have a split zone property and we want to make sure all the property is medium density residential. For the the applicant's request. The second one is at sixty thirty-five Avondale Avenue. As your board may know. Regional Yuba Center Transit has bought the property at sixty thirty-five. Avondale and they're seeking to develop it with their new transportation headquarters. And so we want to rezone that from medium density residential to public facility to aid them in the development of their project. And there's another property at nineteen seventy-seven Hamilton Smartsville Road. It's a property that's zoned, single family residential. It's surrounded by properties that are zoned, medium density residential. So we wanted to upzone this property. So it's a medium density residential property. And lastly, there's a little part. Property by Loma Rica School on Loma Rica Road. You guys might have seen it. If there's, there's been a sign there, higher shot coming soon that I think fell down recently, but it's been up there for about ten years. And the property is zoned for rural residential. It's an acre in size. You just really can't develop a acre sized parcel with a house, a septic system. You know, and again, the other surrounding properties are on a commercial corridor. So we figured that it made more sense to make that property rural commercial and. And maybe allow like a farmer's market or some some sort of event based commercial activity. Be able to go on that site. So that's, those are the proposed changes. I know I jumped through them pretty quickly. If you guys have any specific questions, please let me know. In terms of environmental review, we are determining that this project's consistent with our EIR from our general plan and therefore. There's a notice of exemption that that we can file for CEQA. And that concludes my presentation. Can I answer any questions?
We'll open the public hearings and. Any questions from the board?
Softball question on the Costco commercial district, the materials yard, is there one there currently?
No, there there aren't any. So we're not going to create anything where someone's legal nonconforming. We just want to make sure that. You know, we have commercial uses that are job based and sales tax based and not just having. Equipment laying on a, you know, open lot, like which is more of an industrial activity.
Okay. Just one quick question back on the mobile homes. I guess I was a little confused. What is the status of new? Mobile home projects in the state? Was there some restriction on that?
So so it's only, so so there's not really any restriction. We're not changing anything. We're just adding clarification in our development code, just. So right now, if someone, if I were to develop a mobile home park. As long as I got through the land use approval from from the county. The actual development and permits that would be issued don't come through our building department. They go through. California's housing and community development. So they, they're the ones who approve the the buildings that go into the mobile home parks. Any construction that goes along in a mobile home park. And the development of the site from the roads, the sewer to the water. They're the ones. Who are approving that and not community development. And so what we wanted to do was make sure that it was clear. That if someone were to develop a mobile home park in the. High density residential zone, which we wouldn't require any building permits, that the developer. At least knows that they still have to pay development impact fees from the county so that the county. Will get money to pay for the parks, the the impact of the sheriff's department, libraries, et cetera, et cetera.
The only reason I ask, I, for some reason, I heard that mobile home parks weren't even going to be allowed in California.
There's rumors everywhere.
So we had a thing ready. If the state did approve one, we're ready, but the state doesn't.
So so we approved the land use portion of it. The state approves the the actual site development.
Okay, but the state's attitude now is they're not going to approve them.
I I haven't heard that yet, but it doesn't mean that they're not leaning towards that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any further questions from the board? Okay. Any questions from the public? All right, they're being done. Bring them back to the board. Close the public hearing. We need a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance. Okay, need a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Whoops. Roll call. Roll call. Okay. Forgot that little thing down there. Okay, roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer. Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Let's see where we're at.
Forty-five. No, we're on forty-five now.
Forty-five. Community development ordinance. Jeremy, a long time no see. It's nice to visit.
Chair, members of the board, Jeremy.
Strang with the building department. You know, Kevin said he was going to be quick. I'm going to do my best to beat him. So the item in front of you is the final reading. For an ordinance that proposes to create chapter ten dot twelve of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. For an expedited permit process for electrical vehicle charging stations. I actually have nothing to add from my original presentation. So with that, I would recommend that your board waive that reading and adopt the ordinance adding chapter ten dot twelve to the Yuba County Ordinance Code. Any questions that you have? I'm happy to answer them.
All right, we're open the public hearing. Yeah. Any questions from the board? No?
This is, this is just a, we already approved this last meeting and now we're just. Putting a.
The, the, correct. The, the last meeting was the introduction of the ordinance. This would be the adoption of it.
Any questions from the, questions from the public? We'll bring it back to the board. Close public hearing and waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motions.
Second it.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Okay, board and staff member reports. We're going to try something new here and. Have a little more expansion on the board member reports about new and exciting things. Mr. Mr. Blazer, Supervisor Blazer.
Well, we'll try to keep it down to my three minutes, but. The city's been doing a good job. I think of publicly, you know, bringing to your attention all the projects they have coming up and there's a lot. Some of which I can address because they've publicly stated, but there's. They do have a big push now for residential infill for market rate housing. So. That residential infill helps feed the business, particularly in the downtown area. So they. Have on, it's been in the paper about the thirty-two unit, I think, complex on the corner of Third and D. There's some other townhouses on other vacant properties of which there's quite a few. These are all market rate. So these would be people that would have some disposable income that could help feed the economy in the in the downtown. So on the business side. Trying to think what I can say and what I can't say. You've seen Dutch Brothers, that's going up. Lot of activity on B Street. There is a grocery store coming in that area. There's more talks on the a new hotel. I think. The, I think the taco place is coming in there on B Street. So there's quite a bit of activity on B Street. And then. I think the most exciting thing would be developing the market rate residential infill. So if you just keep an eye on the news. We're very fortunate. We have a very strong city hall right now and they're very active, very proactive. So. I think things are are moving along. They're almost as strong as the Yes to Yuba project. On the fun side, this weekend or the next weekend is the Buckeye Weekend. And they've expanded that quite a bit. They're actually doing a cruise on Friday night. There's on Saturday, there's a five K run. The parade itself is at eleven o'clock. I think there's a street dance at twelve thirty. There is a. Lion Dance Blessing of the Businesses around two, lion dance performance at seven thirty. And then on Sunday, there's a rib cookoff and apparently a car show. And then somewhere in there, there's a fireworks show, which is. Probably been officially legal now. I think in the past it probably has not been, but so there's a fireworks show on on Saturday night. There's more, but that's it.
Okay. All right, Seth.
So for three things that are important to Olivehurst, I probably should mention drainage and sidewalks. So I'm super excited about our designations that we're going to do. I'm going to find out more about PDP and PIP. And what that all entails so that we can get our points, so we can get those grants, so we can make that happen. So that is. We're always, we're we're fighting a good battle and we're moving the needle a little bit and that makes me excited, but always more in that direction. Code enforcement, we need to keep moving that needle. So Jeremy, I'm glad you're here and you're going to be pushing on all of those projects and. Olivehurst is going to be pristine and beautiful in the next six months, right? And so that's going to happen and we're going to close out those cases and nothing's going to be ten years old and I'm super excited about all of that happening. And then thirdly, commercial district and Linda, that's fantastic. I'm super jelly. So we need to have that in Olivehurst as well. I'm sure Rachel's already putting one together. And we're going to increase businesses over at the airport and we're going to make lots and lots of jobs. So those are the things we want in Olivehurst. As far as on my stuff, we had a fantastic candlelight vigil on Thursday of last week. It was really great. I I'm going to make a small confession here. I don't know that I was as community minded. Before I took office as I thought I was because parades didn't do a lot to excite me. I never went to a candlelight vigil, that sort of stuff. I I cared about individual responsibility and excelling and people. You know, all doing the right thing, but it wasn't, I didn't, I don't think I understood the dynamic of the community as much. And so. Being in these parades these last couple of years, seeing the community come out to that, it makes my heart tingle a little bit when it didn't before. And the candlelight vigil was fantastic balloon release. Seeing three hundred plus people at least there, all out there showing support. That was just really great. So that was a. Super event. I highly recommend those sorts of things for other people now that I'm a believer in it. We have a flood orbital dam advisory. Mr. Messick, I think it's not this Friday, but next Friday. So I think he's going to be my designated. Check it out and see what's happening there. And the next big event is Say Love because code enforcement's important. There's a community organization in our area that does litter cleanup. We're going to be working on fire trails. I'm the sponsor for Say Love for February. And we're going to be coordinating it with Buckeye. And so the luncheon for the volunteers will be at the. One o'clock next to the cigar box at a corner from the brick. So everyone go out at seven thirty in the morning and clean and then I'll feed you lunch.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Messick.
You're going to skip to me? Okay. So Supervisor Bradford and I went on a tour of Nellis Air Base and Creech Air Base. With the Bill Lez on his committee. Since he's not here, I'll, that'll be his update also. Very informative. It's to support Bill Air Force Base. And we got to go witness this red flag, which is the Air Force's version of Top Gun. So it was. Quite a show. I've been attending the North Yuba Water District meetings. And looks like they're on track to be providing irrigation water to Oregon House Dobbins this year. And they're doing a lot of work from the new board. And let's see, Yuba Center Chamber of Commerce, I went this morning to the Yuba Center Marketplace. Early morning riser deal before I came here. The Chamber Gala is this Friday. I'll be attending that. I don't know if any of the rest of you will be. So supporting the chamber. Had several community meetings, one in Smartsville with a. A group of people in Smartsville. I've had a couple of meetings with Rachel and. The guys doing the food hub that the. Previous to me, you guys approved a grant for that. They're working diligently to. Fulfill the requirements of that grant. It's about it for now. Report.
Okay. Well, the big, big event in District One is the Costco permits issuance. That's going to bring a ton of, ton of people to to Yuba County and. The other concern that some people have is the widening of seventy and it's going along as fast as it will go and. You know, everybody's got an opinion. Everybody needs traffic breaks. But we're going to do that and the widening is happening now right over. The off ramp on onto North Beal. I think we were going to look at. Doing a ad hoc committee. Is that correct? Or do you want to do that afterwards?
Yeah, I'll bring that up under my.
Okay, all right. Well, those are the two biggest things. I think there's anything bigger than that for District One. So. Any comments from county council?
Nothing from our office, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's see if my green light stays on. It 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 turned off on me while I was commenting a little bit ago, Natalie. I'm not sure what I got going on. A little phantom on off switch over here. So anyways. Let me start with thanking HHS for their presentation today. As as the board will recall, we're we're setting up the board with. The the first board meeting of each month with a quarterly update rotation. So. You had community development provide that presentation in January, HHS this month. Next month will be public safety. So whether it's the sheriff's department, district attorney's office, probation, or a combination of those three. They're going to be working on a presentation for you at the first meeting in March. And so that rotation will continue throughout the calendar year so that the board's kind of up to date on the big things that are happening in those. Those large sectors of county services. To add to that. Your meeting coming up on February twenty eighth, there's going to be a special presentation relative to drainage. So Public Works Department is working on a a presentation for the board on that particular issue. So plenty of presentations. Yes. One item that I've been working on with our PIOs and and I believe Russ in particular will be reaching out to each board member. We'd like to have images of each district and so. You know, not not only for things that we can add to our website and social media presence and maybe even pictures on the wall. So so Russ Brown, our our PIO. He'll be reaching out to you to kind of talk through, you know, what what would you like to see represented for your particular district? In in images. And maybe you already have some images, pictures you've taken or constituents that have shared pictures with you that you think would be. Relevant that that really highlight the. The values or the the aspects of of your particular district. So so that's. That that's near few, near term here. And then the other one, I mentioned at the last board meeting that the county is kicking off an update of our strategic plan. We're going to be forming a a group to.
Uh, we're going to be forming, uh, a, a group to kind of work through, um, that process. And, um, I'd, I'd like to ask, uh, the chair to form an ad hoc committee, um, to assign two board members to that to kind of work with, um, the, the managers on that particular thing. There's going to be plenty of opportunity. We'll have check-ins with the full board as the, as the process, um, runs through, but this one, uh, we wanted to at least have an ad hoc that we can kind of check in before we, uh, through the process.
Okay. Um, I'd like to, to volunteer for that and, and Garrett Bradford, uh, for that ad hoc committee. And then, uh, we'll, we'll inform the board as it goes along.
All right. Thank you, Chair, for that. And, and we'll be reaching out, uh, to get, get you on the schedule there.
Okay. All right. Any comments? Okay, well, I'm going to suggest we have a five minute break and we're going to go into closed session. Existing litigation, code section 54956.9 Monaco versus Uba County. Existing litigation pursuant to, uh, code section 5495, Arnel versus Uba County, uh, conference with real property negotiator, the government code section 54956, real property APN 013. I thought I had to go through this.
Go ahead. Nobody's listening to you, but finish up.
And, uh, co- a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code 54956.8. Property identified as 4.1.11 acres, APN 013, 410, 112. And conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956, Hendrick versus Grant All. Then we have initiation of a litigation pursuant to government code, uh, number of cases one, initiation of litigation, number of cases one. All right.
Good job, Andy.
Did you?
Does the five minute start now or from when?
UbaSutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings. Strings for instruments and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.